Motion passes. We'll go on to de-petitions, public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is around three minutes. Please, if less, if you can take less, please do so. So we'll open a public forum. Okay, not seeing anyone that wants to take advice out. We'll move on to staff requests. Have anybody that... okay, Tracy.
Counsel, members of the public, I just have a long list up here of things to go. I don't get up here much, so I just try to cover it all, then you won't see me for a couple months. Up here, anyway, you'll probably see me. First, just a couple of things. When I talk tonight, it'll be in not fiscal years, so I'm going to give you some numbers, like with the cemetery and the calendar year, or with the golf. At the cemetery, we did 102 burials last year, and 35 of those were on Saturdays. So roughly, you know, 30% of our burials are going that way. It's given us a little issue with overtime and different things. You can see why people want to have their services on Saturdays, but it just seems to be trending more and more to Saturday burials. Snow removal's gone quite well, I think. We've had a light, we've had a light winter on weekends. We've had some things, but some storms, but most of the guys stepped in and helped each other out, I thought. I think it's gone quite well.
Can I ask you a question on the snow removal?
Please.
This was just asked me on, I put out the map of the snow removal, the priority. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, 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 sidewalks. I mean, candidate of the roads, but we're doing that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody just asked me why the road in front of the fire department is like a third-tier road. So I don't know, if we need to look at that some...
Yeah, the roads, the roads, we don't do any of the roads. We only do the sidewalks.
I saw that comment.
Okay.
In the parks, park side of things, we got a couple big things that we're working on. I know the mayor's been involved with Wes Barney, who I just want to say Wes is great. He's, we hired him, you know, roughly six months ago, and he's been so good, so excited. It's kind of contagious, his excitement, so. But we do have a tree, one of the older big trees in Memorial Park, that last year, well, probably 30 feet up, half of the tree fell. And it looks like it's diseased. Long story short, we're gonna have to take that tree down. So the reason why I'm telling you guys that is because you're probably gonna get some phone calls on that. We don't, we don't want to take trees down anywhere. We want to plant trees, but as a safety concern, we need to take that tree out of Memorial Park, and then we will, in turn, just plant one right back in the same hole. We'll try to get a nicer, more established, bigger caliber tree to get in there, because we know that those trees were planted in honor of soldiers, so, and I know it's a, it's a tough...
It's funny about that, because it seems like when we planted trees lately, they've been smaller.
Yeah.
Trees, and not the same giant trees that also fall.
Yeah, it's just all budgetary. I mean, I would love to plant like...
Because I'd like to, I mean, that's the department's known for, so I'd like to budget to have nice, big trees go back.
And I, I listened to some stupid radio show from USU, and they do have a USU app that you can look at, put them in there, but the guy asked point-blank, the guy from Utah State, what is your idea, what's the prettiest tree, if you could plant any of them? And it was kind of surprising to me, it was actually an elm tree. But it's called the lacebark elm, which gets that big size and everything like that, but has a fancy design on the outside of it. So, and it may not hurt to consult with someone like that, because there are big trees that maybe have been shunned in society because they were, they have crappy ancestors, but they've, they've, they've line bred these out to get some nice trees that are resistant and stuff, and so just, that's just food for thought.
On that note, we do, we, you know, we're doing a thing with all of our maples with seven trees, because, you know, maples are a popular tree around here, but in our climate, they don't do as well. And so, yeah, with every tree that we've, we've been talking to different, different...
Arborists.
Yeah, arborists, and Wes, right now, is in school to become an arborist. So it's exciting to, you know, to see what he thinks, but yeah, that's a good point. Sometimes the trees we liked actually don't do as well there. And one thing I have learned is when you have a nice park and you plant all these trees for soldiers, and they're all the same age, they all start kind of dying at the same time. So it's nice to have a replacement program. We'll get into that in about 20 minutes when I finish. So that needs to happen. Wes and the mayor and myself have been involved in the beautification of downtown. I have a bid back on that with the flowers and whiskey barrels, and, you know, I'm pretty pleased with what it's looking like, and we can go over details in the budget, but it was, I thought it was really cost-effective to do something down there with some flowers and try to dress that up. Also on those lines, another theme coming up is the dog park, which is a, we've gotten our numbers back on that, we've gotten a couple locations. So, again, that'll be funding, but that's coming down the pipeline in parks.
So is that? I have notes here to talk about that. My wife's asked me to, so it gets talked about.
Sure.
Are you looking to implement a new park, or are you looking to convert an old park?
Right now, we're looking at converting Park, East Hills Park.
Was that in there? There's like 35 parks in East Hills.
I know, I know, and I'm over the park, and I still have, it would be out, if you go out on Main Street as far south, you know, by Spring Lake Elementary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right there. Would that be a fenced park?
Yes, yes, it'd be fenced, and there's parking there. It's just, it's a big enough park. So you, like you said, we have a lot of parks in town, but a lot of them, you don't, you don't know. Excuse me, Doug?
No, Main Street out farther than that.
Spring Lake. Spring Lake Elementary, it would be on the north side of Spring Lake Elementary.
The one that my wife brought up, I mean, and I don't know if we need to, like, dedicate it as a dog park, but maybe a couple of our parks provide baggies and receptacles for waste, and open those up to dogs. I know the one that she was looking at, I think they call it Hollow Park by Eight South.
Yeah.
I know that before Hollow Park meets...
It doesn't have any real grass, she says, but it has pathways, and I don't know.
It's a native park. It's designed, I mean, we have some little grass around it, it's designed to be native.
So I don't know if that would be one...
If I could interject just a little bit, and I've been trying for over a year, year and a half, and, you know, looking around, because there have been some, people have come up to me and asked me about a dog park, and some comments. So sometime ago, about a year ago, I went over to Spanish Fork to see what type of facilities they have. And the one, so they have two, and they have one that's right next to a school, and then another one, it's a water basin, you know, for rain. But it's, the one next to the school, they've divided it in half, and as a maintenance effort, they close one side for a while and use the other side, and then rotate it back and forth. So I've talked to Wes about the possibilities of doing that, and he's got some really good thoughts and plans for an eventual park. Maybe we can take bits and pieces of as we grow, but there is quite a bit of, and you need a fence to keep these dogs in, because they won't be on a leash, and so there are some costs that we need to incur, but we've got some pretty good traction on that.
Absolutely, and eventually, we'd want one on maybe that side of town, you know, a couple, two or three dog parks.
And I'm not looking for the fence. I know that, I think that the city ordinance right now says dogs aren't allowed in any park.
Yeah.
Even on leashes.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying, more, I mean, there's all these walking paths, we have a lot of walking paths, I don't know what the rule is for the dogs on the walking paths. To me, I, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to get out there and walk, and if it's discouraging people from walking, because they can't take their dogs, and that's...
I think if we went down that road, then it would be, get with Mark, and maybe designate parks that you can walk a dog in, and then we put up the doggy bags and shelves, and that's fine.
And Hollow, Hollow Park would be that. It wouldn't be, this isn't a cut-your-dog loose, it's keep it on a three-foot rope and go for a walk.
Absolutely, you're not gonna, yeah.
That could be a whole package that we're looking at, as we do a dog park. We can look at all...
Absolutely. It's just, you know, so, so, yeah, we're all for dogs in parks, it's just, it doesn't work in Memorial Park during celebrations and different things. And they're obviously your cleanup, so, to be continued on that, and I do have the numbers, but we'll go over that in the budget session. The guys are out at Spring Lake today, they were cleaning all the suckers off of the trees and stuff. A thing that's coming too, is we would like to, on the west side, we're gonna grade that all, so you'll see some dirt work out there. We're gonna knock it all down and level it out, and then we're gonna try to plant some trees along the west side, and then put back a native grass. So not like a grass, green grass, but something more native that we can mow and look good there, because that's another natural park. So that's coming down, and so if you hear about us on the west side of Spring Lake, that's what we're doing. Okay? So we're gonna try to, try to dress, dress that up. A couple of other parks I'll go over later, since I've been up here too long. On the golf end, last week I was down at our, last week I was, we were down at our meetings, and our assistant project got an award for junior golf leader of the state of Utah. So that was a great recognition for his work with the youth. We have, we have two traveling teams, and then I think he ran seven or eight junior camps. So we had, you know, 150 kids that take golf lessons up there, so that was a nice, nice thing for us.
Can we get our social media people to put that up under Rex or somewhere?
Yeah, absolutely.
We ought to recognize them.
Yeah, for sure. The bathrooms at the golf course, we're starting sheet rock tomorrow, so it's, it's getting close.
Lynn is not here to celebrate.
I know, Lynn is not here to celebrate, and the gra, the snow's melting, and I'm panicking, so we're gonna, you know, we're working hard, but with like a one- or two-man crew, you can only do, but, so that's coming along, we'll get you pictures, pictures of those. We also walked today on all these trees that I want to, and I haven't even told this to Dave, so I don't mean to shock Dave, he's gonna let him know, but parks, cemetery, we want to, we want to revive a working nursery in Payson. We've allotted an area at the golf course, we think we could do 200 trees. We'd still work with Olson's hand-in-hand, and get our, our starts from them, and the buckets, and, but we want to fence in that area and have trees available for the community, for a whole community, for, you know, we really want to do that, that's just in the, in the beginning phases right now, but that's something that we're gonna ask to get going.
Is it for the city or for set off?
For, I'm open to anything, but mostly for the city. You know, in parks, we can use 200 trees a year, and, you know, we got new parks coming in, golf, anywhere in the city, and then if, if, I don't think we want to compete with any local businesses, but, but, you know, if we donated some to the school district or whatever, but it's something that we, we'd really fill with. The Army Park, you know, if we would've had those trees, we could've just used our own trees.
Didn't we have one down at the cemetery, and what?
It's never, yeah, I don't know, that's before mine, yeah. But we've got a, we've got a spot picked up there, we have all the fencing and everything, so I'm gonna get some costs and see if it's worth it to the city, you know, and, and then we just, we think it'd just be a win-win for everyone to be able to, you know, produce a couple hundred trees and continue to do that. Last but not least, golf course numbers from last year, we were up, we were up 20% from our best year. Now, that's, again, an annual year, so, so we were up 132,000 off of our best year. In the restaurant, we were up 30%, which was almost $13,000. So it was a nice trend, finally, you know, we got through the fire, and we're starting to see a lot of increase in play, a lot of tournaments calling, a lot of different things, so it's a good trend, it's good news, so. That's it. I'll see you in two months. If you have any questions.
Thanks for the warning.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks.
So we'll go to number four, but I've had a request, counsel, to, to, if we can deviate. Well, I don't think we have, these aren't scouts, do you want, do you want four?
I got ahead myself. I got a nice view of the sunset, so I'm all right.
Although I like the trend of every two months, but I thought the time was taken by Tracy did a well, very well job, well, very well. A good job on his presentation.
That's right, you have to come up every month.
Two months is about the time Scott comes, I don't know.
Yeah, somebody's gotta take care of the city. Mayor and council. Just to let you know, we, we had the issue with Nestor with his injury, and so he put a quest in with KSL for a high five. We did that last Wednesday, they showed up. It took a little bit of doing to get the crew together, because our crews are mixed all the time, we never have the same crew typically. So we finally got a day where we get two crew members, so I had to tell little White Light to get the other crew member there.
That was a big white light.
Yeah, it was. I had to get him out of his full-time job to get him there, so I was telling them, hey, we had to meet with an attorney that he was one of the caretakers on a patient, and so we needed to talk a little bit about some possible litigation, and boy, he swept, I called him at 9:30 at night, he said, you gotta be there tomorrow. So it went really well, but as he's sitting there on the station, we're waiting for Dan Spindel to get there, the other crew, all of a sudden leaves, like, whoa, wait, where are you going? And they were headed up to go do some activities, and so I said, you're gonna leave him there by himself, thinking he's gonna meet with an attorney, and so I had him go back in and wait with him, and we finally got it done, and it turned out really well, so it'll air this next Wednesday. So we got to have Nestor there and meet all three crew members that helped treat him during the transport to St. Mark's, so it was a cool thing to see, so. And they were way surprised, they had no idea, they were waiting for an attorney on a video camera. Also, just let you know, we've been working with the different church groups for our preparedness. We used to meet, try and meet once a month, but we're shooting for March 21st to do the Dry Creek cleanup again. It was a good success last year, so we're gonna shoot for that again and have those assigned areas stay the same, and so we're looking forward to that, so we'll get some information out to everybody. We've started that with those different groups, so they can start spreading the word. Also, we had a fun event last night, so if you have forgotten phone calls, we did a more of a trauma-type vehicle accident with rope rescue and stuff with PDINs, so they were there and spent a few hours treating patients down the bottom of the hill, and then doing rope rescue-type activities to bring the patients up and treat them, and then haul them to a hospital, but it was a fun activity, had lots of good participation, and hopefully they learned a lot. We get these type of activities up the canyon, especially in the Narrows, and then down below Maple Bench where the sharp turns are, where the vehicles go off, so one of those activities we use quite a bit, but lots of good things going on, so, thanks.
Thank you, chief.
I'd like to thank Fire Namens too. I seen that they had a high five, and they do an awesome job. We were just out with them, a kid that got hit by the ballpark, by a car, and those guys were there before I even had a chance to even turn around, so I thank those guys, they do an awesome job. We were also on the news, as you guys have seen, the last week or so. Just a report on that, we have rest warrants out for the rest of the individuals on that case. They are in a neighboring jurisdiction, so we're working with them to bring them in. They were out there, also juveniles, so we're not releasing their names at this point, but...
So the one was a 19-year-old, and the others are juveniles?
Two are adults, the rest are juveniles.
So somebody else was on Facebook who said that somebody was scanning for sevenies. Did you hear that?
To those missionaries? We proved that not to be true, because the missionaries were actually at one of our officer's houses last night, eating dinner, so we have, we have proven that to be, as far as we know, I guess there could be others in town, but those two were actually at dinner during the night.
Do we worry about him?
What's that?
Do we worry about that missionary?
Do we worry about him?
Yeah.
I've been in touch with him. Yeah, he's okay.
Yeah, he's good.
He's just fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't want anybody to do that again.
No, and we don't have this, I mean, it's pretty rare for an incident like that to happen.
If I could interject just one second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, I have, I've been in touch with him, and he's, he loves Payson, he thinks it's a great place, which it is. There was an awful lot of public support for him. He had his glasses that were broken, and he had multiple people wanting to donate to him so that he could get those glasses back. At the end result was, there's a company here, I don't know exactly who the company is, but it's either Utah County, in Utah somewhere, that had heard about it and stepped forward, and they, they will stand the cost of getting his glasses back. So there, there is great public support for him.
I think it's Apple Valley Vision, here in Payson, at least they had offered online.
Wonderful, but there is a lot of support.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's been great, he's doing really well. He, he's a tough kid, so it, it worked out really good in the end, obviously a bad situation, but they're happy and we're glad they're, they're okay, so. I've been kind of rushed to get here tonight, so I don't think I have anything else, so, unless you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Any other staff? I don't want to cut anybody off. Or you did it once.
Tracy wants to go.
Oh, again, Tracy?
In all fairness, it's like the first time in six months you guys have heard me.
Thought you were a new employee.
I know, I...
We don't have any scouts tonight, but I would like to acknowledge the park board, deacons, teachers?
Teachers.
Deacons?
Teachers.
Teachers! Okay. So thank you for being here, and appreciate your, your interest in city council. I have had a request for, to deviate from our agenda. Oh, council.
Gosh, dang, okay, there we go.
Does somebody need to get out of here? Because if they need to go, I mean, we could, we could discuss that a little bit.
Okay, Councilman Christensen, please.
Well, I had a chance to talk about the dog park, I appreciate that. My, my son participated in a NOAA graduation, and I, it was really fun to see all the police officers there. They did a canine demonstration, I think the kids were appreciative of that, and I am grateful that the police support that, and they're trying to do some preventative rather than just clean up, so shout out to them. Thank you, Chief Vishwanath. I don't think I have anything else.
I just have a couple of things, since Tracy's here, and we won't see him in the other six months.
You'll see me, I just won't talk.
Okay. Anyway, I was talking to a gentleman last week, and he actually is here tonight in our work session, but there are groups that's looking to put in a higher-end hotel in Payson, and we invited him to the golf event last year, and he's owned a couple of businesses and traveled all over the United States going to golf events, all over the United States, Pebble Beach and a bunch of them. He said that was the best golf event he's ever been to, and that we put on by the cities, with Tracy's help, so. So I think we're making a little headway there, so that's great. The other thing is, I'd just like to thank the mayor for all, all the work he does. I don't think anybody knows how much time he spends in the behind-the-scenes. I think, I say I get paid about a buck an hour, and he probably gets paid about quarter an hour, so, anyway, thanks, mayor.
Thank you. It's like coaching to be one. No, just don't make any money. Yeah, so a couple of things, and one of the things I want to talk about is just how great our community is, there's been some talk about, oh no, we've got these gravel rousers, but for those of you who don't know, if you go to Safewise, they rate cities for safety, and Payson was number four last year, safest cities in Utah. So we've got a great community, and you can kind of see that over the last year with the fires and everything, everything like that, we've had tremendous amounts of volunteer turnout, for sandbagging, for helping their neighbors, for cleaning the channel. We live in a pretty great place, and I'm grateful for where we live in, and I'm grateful for all the residents, and I think we just need to focus on being kind. Be kind to your neighbors, look out for one another, and we'll continue to be a great, a great place. I also got to the state Capitol, Payson and Vineyard were recognized on the floor of the House, got to go with Dave and Councilman Hewitt and the mayor, to be recognized for participating in right-choice voting, that was kind of a neat opportunity. I did get some feedback, I'm gonna pass this back to Jill right now, probably doesn't need to be right now, but since we're here. I did have several people tell me on the Imagine Payson survey, that they just didn't finish it, because it was so long and so detailed, and so I'm kind of curious to know like how many partial surveys we have done, so I don't know if that's information that Fergino C. has, but I am kind of curious to know whether we really got the full input because of the survey was not broken up into bite-sized pieces, especially with our work session coming up next weekend. Other than that, I told the Morellos kids back there that I was gonna make them stand up and give speeches, but we decided, what's the 19th Amendment?
Woman's right above.
All right, if you didn't get that right, you'd be in trouble. Dave, that's all I have.
So we had our chamber, our annual chamber banquet last week, and I thought it was a great success. We had, well, same place, the motel was there, and the owner across from that movie was actually the, one of the businesses up here, and we really appreciated him coming. The Chamber really did a really good job. It was the president of UCU that gave the talk, and boy, you guys ought to go look her up and see where she came from, you would be amazed at what that woman has, came from and to achieve what she's achieved to this day, and oh my goodness, that woman is just so intelligent and smart. I'm very serious when I say go look it up and see her autobiography, and to see what she's got in her life. And another thing, so the Chamber has a breakfast club the second Tuesday of every month at 7:45, where businesses can go and meet each other at the Bible School. So any of you that know businesses, or people that need to be out there networking, let them know about it, they need an awesome place to go. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, am I finally gonna be able to do this? Did my best, Reese, to get you up here as quick as we could, so, counsel, I'd like to deviate from our agenda if we could, and then bring Republic Services up, and Dave and Reese.
Come on, Tracy. Don't make a motion, I mean, you have done.
Okay. All a favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we discussed this last council meeting with Mayor Council. You want us to bring it back? I did put some numbers in that Kathy had prepared. We do charge fifty cents an account per month for administrative overhead. As you looked at the account, the fuel surcharge is taken out of that as well, so we don't get that full amount for overhead. So we have about twenty-eight cents that goes toward our overhead. I know the council's hesitant to increase rates mid-season right here on our recycling, so I think the only option is if you want to take that money and help pay for part of the recycling tipping fees that have gone astronomical. So I put a resolution in there with a blank amount. I think the council could, if they wanted to increase the amount, we'd have to bring your fee schedule back and maybe give some notice. If you want to take some of that until the new budget year or until we change the rates annually for the recycling, you know, you're welcome to do that. I just would open it up and Reese is here if you have any more questions. He's the one we want. He has a ballgame, his son has a ballgame at seven.
Tracy took so long. I'm telling you, you guys aren't going to hear from me for a year now.
I have some thoughts here. You're talking about switching to that midstream. I know we have an open enrollment that they, an opt-out period.
It's usually in October.
October is. And I know that's a ways out, but I mean, it's counterproductive for him. I know he doesn't want him to opt out, but if we provided the, a rate increase and then gave him the option to opt out so that they could, if they wasn't willing to pay the more price, I mean, we have to understand the markets there and I don't want to see, I don't want to see them go under over something like this. I don't think this will break them, but it's definitely not helping their bottom line nonetheless. But I mean, is that an option we could do? Is tacking up on there to cover it with the rate increase and then giving the option?
Under the current contract, if you raise it, you know, without your opt-out period, if you raise it so much, we do have to allow it to go out, people can opt out again if you do it now.
So what would that rate be?
If you raise it that small amount, I don't know if we have to open it up. I don't have the contract with me, I have to look at that. So that would be a question.
Here could be my suggestion, because I want to keep it around, but I want to help and I know it's not a lot, but I do the twenty-eight cents per customer and then look at the fees when the period comes up. I think what, four, four or five months when we, when the last year that contract's in place, look at the fees then.
How much would have to be in addition to that twenty-eight cents to get you where you feel like you need to be?
Well, about eighty-five cents would be half.
So roughly sixty some odd cents. Any further discussion on that part of it?
I mean, we talked about not, like, there's so many things that we need to look into our budget and kind of, and let's wait until we do our budget again, so.
But if, but if we raise it up to that sixty cents some odd and then give the people the ability to opt out if they want?
You could do that now or wait until the next period?
Okay. If I want to give them the opt-out option, I'd rather go the dollar thirty, the dollar whatever you're seeking.
We'll get the numbers from Republic, probably June, July, or whenever, because there's a CPI increase that takes place and then we have to, we have to put that out. If we're going to, if we're going to raise our park portion as well, we haven't raised our portion, I don't think we have since we started. It's just usually what we pass on. It's just up to the council.
We would, we would be okay, Mayor and Council if, I mean, as a way, as an effort to try to make a partnership agreement here to take the twenty-eight cents now and David and I can work in that eighty-five cents when we have the chance to budget for that July first. If that would be, if that would be amenable to you, I know that's not much, I mean, just to give you an idea, we, we charge you seventeen thousand dollars a month, but we're losing four thousand dollars of that seventeen thousand that we had not planned on when we started this contract. So if you do the math on margins, that's where we're at, so in unforeseen commodity loss. So, you know, twenty-eight cents would be about, I don't know, six hundred bucks or five hundred and fifty dollars, something like that.
Six hundred.
Six hundred bucks. So if that would be easier for you to stomach, then we could go back to work on what it would look like when you get a chance to budget for that July first and add something into your annual increase.
Okay, based on that, you'll have a motion? Do we need a motion or is it just a discussion?
Motion, Chief. Resolution in there.
I make a motion later to a resolution with, for ongoing recycling tipping fees for the remainder of the residential opt-out recycling, collecting and disposal agreement for twenty-eight cents. Per?
Per billing.
Per billing account.
Until the next, yeah, until the next budget year.
With that motion, that's the second? Okay, calling for a roll call vote starting with Councilwoman Hyde. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number four, presentation by Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems U A M S. Ron, there.
You're all no doubt.
I know, but you've seen my name on there. Excited to go up and present. Turn for me, Doug, to the different.
I'd just please introduce Doug Hunter. He's the senior executive office for U A M S and has been instrumental in helping this new small modular nuclear reactive concept be very close to reality and he's going to be here to give us some data.
Mayor, Council, Public, thank you for your time. I've got PowerPoints coming up right here, but I can start so we don't have to go any too. Really what we're going to do is just give you an update of where we're at. A lot of progress has been done. This seems like it goes on a slow process, but this is a huge regulatory matter. We've got the nuclear regulatory commission involved, we've got Department of Energy involved, we've got Idaho National Laboratories involved, we've got, you know, there's a lot of different people that have to come together. And this is in a way, it's, it's not new technology really, but it's repackaged in a much different way than has ever been packaged before and so we have to constantly deal with that, you know, bring that into reality of commercialization. We're, the value that we're looking at, this is going to be the first slides that come up on, is, and it's still the same concept out here. This is, I guess in a simplistic way, I look at this as a market-based solution for greenhouse gas regulation in lieu of federal regulation or state regulation. I say that because we believe this is economical enough that a lot of utilities would take this on and so they would not have to have a fiat come down from the feds or something like that to say, you got to do this and do that. Now, maybe that's ridiculous, but it's something we're working on. It isn't that, you know, I don't want to say we're, climate change isn't an issue, but it's really the regulation that would happen around that. That's what we're concerned about more than anything and so we want to have this hedge. So the value proposition, so we're looking at this, this project, so that LCOE, that stands for levelized cost of energy, and that's a pretty standard metric in the utility business or that to compare resources. And that's just really the average cost is the simplest way to look at it for the forty years. And right now that is going to be, we've got that peg contractually to be no greater than five point five cents per kilowatt hour or fifty-five dollars per megawatt hour. So you compare that to your rates here. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's less of, it is really a good price. Natural gas combined cycle would be what we would use as a carbon option in lieu of this, like we've got out here by the edge of town, we put another one of those in someplace or that, and that would cost us about the same right there. The one that's going down and is proposed down in Miller County is over sixty dollars megawatt hour or over six cents. And that's on a brownfield site. We have to go on a green field. So we think we've got a pretty good proposition. I can get into that. What are the unique things? Reactors, nuclear reactors normally can't follow load very well. They're, oh boy, with the details, but they just sort of sit there and run constant. They don't move around much. These small guys, these small reactors we're looking at, the sixty megawatt electrics, very flexible. The wind farm we have up in Idaho, we modeled this right after that and we can follow the load precisely. Wind is the most difficult thing to predict, you know, it is just incredibly difficult. And if this meets it perfectly, if you've heard of the duck curve in California due to net metering solar in the morning and the afternoon, those ramp rates, this will follow that precisely without, very efficiently without really any waste of fuel, we can get into that. We're, we've got this thing fleet managed operations or shared services. The other thing that's unique about the U S nuclear fleet is all one of a kind. The ninety-nine reactors in the United States right now are all different and this will be the first time we'll have cookie colored modeling out there. So that means with other deployments, with other places in the United States or Canada, we can set up a shared services. And so what U A M S do, we're going to have three hundred and five employees at this site in Idaho if we're all by ourselves without it. The minute another deployment, that was going to be in Ontario, Canada, comes into play out there, we'll be able to take that staff down to a hundred and twenty-five people in the plant and then share the headquarters, you know, the headquarters with the other deployment. Thus saving us five dollars a megawatt hour or half a cent, so it takes us down to fifty dollars. So it's another really good value proposition. You know, I'm sure you're following all the state legislation that's going through here. All around is the feds aren't doing things, but all these states have been passing these hundred percent clean energy bills out there with certain dates when you can't burn fuel or imported in carbon based fuels into the state. There you have a tax. California right now is about fourteen dollars a megawatt hour to ship carbon into the state. So this will help us with that. We can still be able to deal with it. And as I already mentioned, I won't bore you with the electric regulated markets, those things are so dry and boring, but that is a transition that's going in the utility business in the West. So we're going to have a regulated market in the West eventually here. We've got partly one right now and this fits in perfectly right there. Do I have?
I have a quick question.
Sure, yeah, of course.
How much of the, would this supply our entire city or is it, because I know, like, I don't, I don't necessarily understand all those, those numbers and what we use, but I know that we, we use cheaper electricity and as it goes up, we buy a higher and more expensive electricity, you know, and then we use our peaking station a couple of times a year if it gets really expensive. So what will this do to like, to our energy portfolio?
Right now you're at five megawatts. That's about what percentage, what's your peak? Yeah, about thirty-seven. So it's a small thing. It can go up if you wanted to out there. I believe in a diversified portfolio though. I think that's a really smart thing to do is have different methods in there and keep it mixed a little bit. You want to be in the market, just so we say the market's really good right now, they could change on us as we will. So you can basically custom fit that to exactly what you do. And we've got the resources at U A M S to help Ron with his staff and he's got resources as well to look at this. We normally, we normally do a five-year look, that's a short term look for us. I've also got a forty-year look at you guys. That's a fascinating story. But, you know, none of that's going to happen the way it is. This is modeling, right? That's all it's for is modeling. But we've, so we can actually just customize it any way you want to go. You've got really a blank sheet to work on it. I think right now, I think it's a good call where you're at, the five megawatts, I think that's a good number. We'll just see how this project continues to progress and if it looks better, if you want more, you can get more. Because you're one of the, the people who came in early and so you get, and we've got a lot, I'll just hit that right now, we've got a lot of interest in this because of this state legislation out in the West. We have got a lot of people wanting to get into the project now and that. But Payson is being a key, they have to vote them in. Ron gets a vote on the project management committee and so obviously they get, take feet at the trough first, if I can be so crude with analogy.
So are we, help me clarify this just a little bit. We're not looking to put the nuclear reactor here. It's actually in Idaho. There's a whole field of, right?
Yeah, so, let me, just, let me give you something.
Well, you had mentioned they were putting one in Ontario and that was the first I'd heard they were leaving Idaho and that's why I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, that's, so that's Ontario Power Generating Group up there. They're a public power in the province of, province of Ontario. They're leading, so this is a depiction of the reactor over there on the left-hand side. That's seventy-six feet tall, fifteen feet in diameter. We can put up to twelve of those in the middle of that diagram is a cutaway of the building. The reactor building is not a containment vessel. The outside, if I have, hold on, let me see. So if I could just deviate there, the outside of that, you can think of that as a thermos bottle you're looking at out there. And it, there's a, no, excellent, thank you very much. So the, so the outer containment, the outer containment is this thing and then the reactor core is that little red area inside and that's, that's the containment. That takes the position of the big concrete domes you see on big reactors out there, is just that metal casing. So I'll go back and, so we, over on the far right in the middle, you see that green area layout? That's our site. It's thirty-five acres. So we can put up to twelve of these in one site. That's seven hundred and twenty megawatts. That's as big as almost one of the unit standard intermountain power project, but it's twelve separate generators. So we have twelve separate shafts and that gives us a lot of flexibility. They're below grade, that's the dirt cutaway you can see there, and they sit in a water bath. That's their safety cooling water. No additional water has to be added in an emergency to go through. They can self-cool themselves.
Adding a comparative size, you talked about the big concrete.
Oh, those things, yeah.
I mean, how many of these does it take to make one of those?
Well, those, we'd be a little shy. Right now, the, the big reactors, the closest one here would be Palo Verde down there. Those are basically eight hundred to nine hundred megawatts each. There's three of them, you go through. And so twelve of our units right there would be somewhat comparable to one of their units out there. This is what happens in a safety mode. They're, they're passively cooled. Again, this isn't new technology, it's what the Navy uses in their submarine system, it's called passive cooling. We don't have to have pumps to keep water on the cool. You know, what happened in Fukushima is that they lost their outside electricity, they couldn't keep the core cool and it melted, you know, and that was the problem they had. Here, we pass it, you can see the days down the bottom, how quickly it goes. If we had an emergency, we go out there. So we're operating, the, what this is operating at is you're operating at about, I apologize on the terms here, but we're at two hundred megawatts thermal or sixty megawatts electric. One second after turning them off, we go to ten megawatts thermal. That's how fast the heat drops. They're so small, they dissipate that heat that quickly. That's what makes them so safe. You can see it over, we get down to less than four hundred kilowatts, they move it over as it goes through the period out there to where they can just indefinitely air cool. We don't need any operator assistance if there's an emergency. It's a walk away. The computer shut out the operators. They can't, there's nothing for them to do. There's no, we don't need any outside electricity in an emergency. Very, very safe technology, if you will, out here. And it's really there. And they will be placed on the Idaho. Maybe I have a segment. No, I don't have a segment.
You say they're passively water cooled. What about an earthquake if they cracked it open and all the water drained out? I mean, is that, that just such a far-fetched problem that it wouldn't? I guess if you're cracking open the earth, the last thing you're going to worry about is nuclear spill, but nonetheless, I'm not enough.
That's really good. That's good, that's good, Councilman. You're right. I mean, but no, the N R C is a very exact regulator and that is, we all have, that had to be studied, that very same case. And so that we can go, it would be, it takes about two hundred days to cool if there was no water at all, does air cool, it takes about two hundred days to get down to those levels.
Is there a nuclear fallout that falls with that?
No.
Cool on their own without actually releasing the radiation into the air?
That's right. And the other thing we've got, we just got a finding out at the N R C, if the worst accident you can have in a nuclear reactor is exposing the core to the atmosphere, to your point. The radiation levels associated with that accident on these machines here would not harm the public past that fence line at thirty-five acres. On large reactors right now, that's ten miles from the reactor. That's the difference in safety. A ten mile radius from the reactor core is what you'd have to evacuate if a large reactor were exposing its core to the atmosphere. You'd have to evacuate everybody out of there because the radiation levels would be too high for human tolerance. With ours, it's at our fence line, thirty-five acres. They're just, they're just small, you know, this thing, there's just not a lot of uranium in them and so that level of radiation just dies off if we just totally expose it to the core. And you don't get a high, the other thing, so again, if I use Fukushima, the- And you don't get a, the other thing, so again, if I use Fukushima, the explosion that was on hydrogen gas, it was the development of hydrogen gas in the system, and that's due to, oh boy with the details of big reactors, we do not produce that at all, we would never have, we cannot, we don't even have that failsafe, the NRC is totally clean as of having to deal with that scenario because we, it's just not there. So as I said, we're going through the, go ahead.
What's the long, how long does the fuel rod last?
Okay, well, the rods, that's a very good question. The rods right now, we've got sitting there, we could go for four years without refueling. But the NRC has a requirement, you go in every two years and inspect all the welds and fittings and things of that nature. And because it's 15 feet in diameter, it sits down.
75 feet or you're saying?
Yeah, 76 feet tall and 15 feet in diameter. Oh wait, I want to go back up to the, right there. When we look at that center building down there, I'll put the pointer, this is a reactor, this is a module coming in, these are the slots they sit in right here. This is six, this is a good cutaway. We put them in here and so every two years we'll take one, there's a crane, lifts them up, there's the crane, it lifts them up, moves them over to this refueling flange. We take them apart, we take out, we take out about 20% of the fuel and replace that. And so 80% of the fuel still stays in it that we had before, we mix it up a little bit, there's some other chemistry you do there, and it goes back into service. We still have 95% of the energy in those, what we call spent fuel or what we calls waste. That'll sit in this water cooled area. The NRC again currently has a regulation, they want you to leave it in there for five years for cooling purposes, but that's for big reactors. We're, as I just showed you, we're just cooled in a matter of time, we can take it out. On the site, I've got a picture of the site, right there. So on the site, the reactor building, that cutaway we were showing you is right there, these are the turbine buildings. Right here, this ISFSI, that is our dry storage. So we bring the fuel out of that wet storage, we put it in a canister, it doesn't, you can touch them, they don't get, they're not hot, there's no radiation coming off of them. And that is a four acre site on our site out there. All of our fuel for, at a 95% plant factor for 60 years would only take one quarter of that land, one acre. That's all the waste. And we can recycle every bit of that and give that uranium back out there. The reason we don't in the United States, it's just more expensive to recycle than to buy it. I mean, that's really the only thing. So if that changed, we could, you know, go through, just use our fuel and just use that out there. Let me just go back over here on the economics for one really quick.
Can I ask you one more question on safety? This is off, way off from what Councilman Christensen asked.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, that's all designed into this here, so all the software associated with this facility is hardwired, it's not the internet, it's not connected to the internet, there's no, and there's no way, somebody would have to break into the facility and pull the cards out of the computer to change the software.
So it's completely unconnected.
It's totally unconnected, it's, it's, excuse me? Yeah, that's, yeah, it is something we wanted to do, we didn't want to have it, you can't say that about the current reactors that are out there, they're very open to that. But this is a new technology, well, it's an older, it's just been recycled into this. It's, again, it's just to make these things as bulletproof as we can get them, right? And put them out there. I just wanted to get one thing, what we're doing right now is we're doing this combined operating license application. You can see right here, the design certification, so the NRC has to approve the design, say that it's safe to the public. And that's going to be done in September, August, September of this year. It's the fastest design certification that's ever gone through the NRC. The main reason, there's nothing really to look at, it's very simplistic, there's no moving parts except the drive mechanisms and some valving, there's no pumps, there's the failure scenarios are going almost minute, and that's what takes forever, you've got to study all these failure scenarios. So it's moving really well. Going through, UAMs though, we still have to submit a combined operating license application to the NRC. And that then will allow us to construct the facility and operate the facility. But it will be based off of that design certification that's going to be up there. I just wanted to accent the team, I mean, we've got a great team, obviously UAMs, that's really people like Ron and the project management committee of the 35 cities that have signed up for this so far, and co-ops, it's not all cities. New Scale is the original equipment manufacturer for the modules and FOR, they have to be their owner, but they're also a very large construction company, they're going to build the balance of plan for us out there on the site up in Idaho. Energy Northwest is a joint action agency like UAMs, they're based in Pasco, Washington, and they operate the Columbia Nuclear Generating Station up there in Washington. And so they're going to treat us like a member and give us at cost, not for profit operations that we go through. I really got a huge shout out to the Department of Energy, they are putting a lot of money into this currently. We have, they will call it 120 million, 119 million dollar grant, but it has a 50/50 cost here, so that means it's 59 and a half million we have to put in to get the other 59 and a half. But that's going up right now this year, we had just maybe, I was in DC last week and that's going to go up significantly here. They want to get us over the finish line as fast as they can get us over the finish line. And that's what's going to assure us to be at $55 is all the DOE money we go through and get in that. We've got the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, they had to learn new tricks, this is, you know, they've never seen these little reactors, they had to, it's taken a long time. $800 million of money has gone into the NRC right now, we get this thing licensed and ready to go. Congress, we got bipartisan support, I was on the Hill, I was with the Democrats, the Republicans, the House, the Senate Appropriation Committee, staff standing, we've got great support on this, to give you an example, Lisa Markowski, Senator from Alaska, and Cory Booker, Senator from New Jersey are hand in hand on this, as a bipartisan thing, very interesting setup. State of Idaho, great partner, they've already passed a couple of concepts for tax support for us up there. Tennessee Valley is another entity that's helping us, they're looking at deploying these down the Clinch River, they're helping us with the licenses. As I said, we have 35 cities and co-ops and, let's see, we even got one in California surprisingly. And they're going through, that is climbing every day, we've got right now 213 megawatts signed up at the 720 max, so about 30% going in. We like, people like to accent this, there's a story we've totally been out, because like this, we like to go out in the public meetings and address this in a public forum and everybody says all of that. I think, I'm not going to, there's the numbers that were, I was just telling you, 59 and a half going through here. There are also, our site agreement is with the, it was the Department of Energy, that's done. And then we're doing this Senior Seismic Hazard Advisory Committee Standards Shack Standards associated with seismic and the DOE is paying for that for us as well. And then this is just New Scale, they just received two weeks ago, $525 million under 50/50 cost here on the DOE as well. So a lot of DOE support. This is a real quick phasing, we're in phase one, we're over here right now. And this is taking a little longer than we thought, right now about four months, like slower than we thought. But as I tell the PNC and hopefully they indulge me, is that I'd rather do this slowly and accurately than trying to it fast and making error. This is the critical phase to make sure all the planning's done. Once we get the COLA, that Combined Construction Operating License application together, that's going to take us about $25 million to get that done. We're going to submit it to the NRC, that's going to start the phase two period, that's about another $20 million approved by the NRC. And then we would get our license to go out there, we would go into the final, design for final notice to proceed. And just a reminder, the contracts, the power sales contracts we have require us to come back to this body, every governing body of the 35 participants or whoever they are, for final approval to go into construction. So it's just not a fait accompli, the cities make one more chance, they have one more. There's numerous offerings, if you're interested, I can go through those again, but there's numerous offerings that are available to you, in and out of this whole process I'm going through, that, these are denoted right here, but there's even more than that, the way it happens, we can provide that. So what we're trying to do is set up a mechanism so the cities have a lot of confidence, they don't feel like they get caught in a spiral, a death spiral, or you know, increasing costs or out of control spending. That's it, I'm setting it up. I think I get them. One of the things we're doing right now is, so we're looking at, normally you would cool the steam cycle, not the nuclear cycle, that's what we call the primary cycle, the secondary cycle is the steam that drives the steam generators. You normally cool that with water, just like we do out at the Payson plant right out here right now. Here we use secondary effluent off your system to cool that. In Idaho, this would all be groundwater out of the Snake River Aquifer, it would be 22,000 acre feet a year to take out of that. We've got Willing, we've got Willing Water Cellar, we've got all that out, we've got that pushed in there. But still water's probably got a greater use than just cooling steam, if you will. So we, yeah, we embarked a while ago on a, what we call a dry cooler, air condenser cooling system. And we've had four engineering firms go over that, it's looking really good. I mean, it's like, I think that's probably, the PNC has to make that decision, they're going to get that this March, where, I don't know if I'm going to, I got a lot for them in March, so I don't know if I'm going to just burn them out. I can just watch them get weary as I, we go to these three hour meetings. So we may do that in April, we may make that cooling decision in April. But it looks like it's going to be very comparable, if not less expensive than water cooling. And that can only require 2,000 acre feet a year if we go to that drive. So it's a big step that we go through.
Could that be implemented in a, like our plant here, if it works for that?
You could. The thing we'd have right here is space. So I don't know, are you in Vail, Ron, I don't know, no, okay. We have, we have a waste heat facility down by, in Washington County on the Kern River Pipeline. It takes the compressors, the natural gas compressors on the pipeline, and they eject exhaust heat, right, from the burning the gas to compress the gas to move along. We put on a facility heat and we make eight megawatts of electricity out of that waste heat and we dry cool that 100% out there in the hot desert of, you know, down in Washington County. And so it's a footprint, that's the thing, and here we got a teensy footprint, you know. It'd be, it'd be different. We could look at an A-frame, you know, to take that out and do an A-frame instead of a levelized flat air condenser, so you know, it's a known technology, it happens all over the place, it's just never been used with nuclear, it's the first times we go on these things, but it's got a lot of approaches. And so, so we're going through all of the, the work, as you can see, it's a constant daily trudge of work, there's so much work to be done here, we've got consultants and everybody moving around, make sure we've got the solid approach. Takes us into what I've been telling you already. And so that's, that's the gist, is there anything else you'd want me to cover on there? Any other question? I'm pleased to answer any questions if you have.
And just timeframe, I know you have, it'll all change, but start construction, finish construction, so when you first put power out.
Yeah, okay, so we, we've got a 36 month construction period. And we, see, the one of the key things, the module, what's happened, if you're familiar with what's going on in Georgia, what's called the Vogel Plan, there's the big news, they're so, three times over their costs, you know, runaway schedule and all that, they are building all that out in the field, they're building the containment vessel out in the field, they're building the reactor in the field. What's happening here is our reactor, that module, the module right here, that module's going to be built in the factory and it's going to be hauled out. But we've got a picture of it, you can see it down there on the truck, that's the Lost River Mount Range outside of I and L, we just did the artist's depiction. And they're going to be hauled out to the site, so we just have to do civil works, that's all we have to do. There's nothing really major, it's been done a bunch of times, so 36 month construction period out there. We had just made it start at 23, if everything goes well, and be online for the first module at 26. And the rest of the 12 modules will come in at 27, to a full plant level is what we're, and we're, we're on that, we're a little on the edge of that, like I said, a couple of months, maybe 90 days, a little of that, but the NRC just gave us a good heads up saying, well, maybe we, they were, part of our schedule had that, the NRC reviewing us for 40 months. And they're now telling us it's probably going to be 24 months because of the success they've had on the other thing. So it's really just going to be seismic and site characteristics and other things, so, yeah. So far, so good. What that really means, and I'll just finish off it, is to give you, so that means that we reduce the interest during construction. And the way that, because we're doing all this on debt, and so that capitalizes, right, that builds up on itself, and that's really a burden on these projects you go out there. So we want to compress these, these periods where we have money outstanding like that and the thing. The other thing is that having a 40 year, a 40 year levelized cost of energy means stabilized rates off of this project, or in real terms, declining rates off of this project for 40 years. It's a real stabilizer. There's really no, there's not a lot, the labor force is going to be the only push on this, 125 plays inflation, there's, there's really no marginal cost chemicals, you know, there's nothing really that goes up, you put in the capital, run it, go for it. Anything else I can help you with? I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. It's not, I'm looking for motion, it looks like. There's no motion on this, no motion, that's all I got on my end here. Just a presentation, okay, that's good. Okay, we'll go to number one, resolution, defer agreement with Eric Reed at 2378 West, 1140 South. Jill?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, so we're looking at this parcel that's highlighted in red here, just to orient those that are here, this is the 8th South interchange here, this is the Terminus of 8th South, this is 1700 West, coming down to new development in this area, and then this enters into Payson's business park. You've got the Union Pacific Railline that comes along in this location, so the property that we're looking at is located west of the railroad tracks, there is not any city utilities out there in that location at this point in time. And so we do have, we've received a building permit application to build a single family home on this parcel, that's owned by Eric Reed. That would trigger the installation of utilities, curb and sidewalk, different improvements. But since there is, or because there is no city utilities out there, it is proposed that we approve a deferral agreement that outlines when those utilities are available, that they would connect the single family home onto city services. So in the interim, they will be allowed to work with the Utah County Health Department on an onsite well and a septic tank, and they will not be required to put curb and sidewalk along that road until they have, there's a storm, there's a storm system out there. It is similar, actually, the agreement is very similar to what was approved for Greg Hyatt and Mike Hyatt for the lots down in this location that they're building their homes there. So just consistent requirements, making sure that we do have some provisions in there for them to connect onto those services once they're available. So we're just looking for a decision by the City Council to allow those to be deferred.
I think that's one of the things we talked about when we annexed all this land, is we were going to kind of follow the county's guidelines and so they could do it instead of being boxed out and couldn't do anything.
That is correct. So following through with those, those, not necessarily commitments, but the discussions we have with those landowners, yes.
I just have a question. So I'm just looking into the future, what's left to get out there, are we making sure that they have enough room, so like on 2400 West, like it's just a little road, are they, are they going back far enough so that they can, I mean, do they know they have to give that to?
Yes, so with the case of this lot, they're already actually off of 2400 West, they're actually within the property quite a bit. But that is something that we did with the Hyatts, is to make sure that, we took into consideration the widening of that road, that road will actually be collector status street, and so it was even wider than that. So we want to make sure that we accommodated the corridor for the road, placed, you know, even power facilities in the right location, and that they place their homes back farther so they won't, we won't have that conflict in the future.
I just wondered about that, because, I mean, and I realize where that is, I mean, but his road may one day be a wider, I mean, that could be where they say to go through. So that's what I wondered, is make sure, I mean, I know that they've left the hole and stuff, I just wanted to make sure that it's back far enough.
Actually, specific to 8th South and the extension of 8th South, Daniel has had that conversation with this gentleman. And to let him know that, you know, we don't know at this point in time, but he is showing the home quite a bit offset of that alignment.
I don't have a problem with it.
Any discussion?
I just have a problem, not a problem, Dave, did we go through and get out the deferrals? Whenever I asked for that like six months ago.
Just make sure we're following up on them.
I would just like to follow up on those and if we need another work session to go over them, I don't, could we get that set up? Or if there's some that need to be taken care of? I mean, this is something that, you know, you're not getting the, the road is, because that's not, we need to go right now.
They just provide a status of, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, we're getting this recorded, right Jill, against the property. Yeah, we're getting this recorded, right, Jill, against the property, so. So anybody that ever buys this or anything's going to be on notice.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution defer agreement with Eric Reid at 2378 West, 1140 South.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. We'll go down to number three, resolution Onion Days Parade Start Time. I guess that you'd hear. Oh, and Janine's here, too.
Janine's here.
Carl's here.
Carl?
Mayor, Council, we've discussed this before, we wanted to bring it to the Council. Most cities that have parades have gone to it at earlier time. We stayed with 10 o'clock for, I don't know how many years, long before I was here. Thought if we could start at 9 o'clock, it'd be a little cooler. Sometimes in, with Onion Days, you get rain or something, but a lot of times it's a little cooler. We just wanted to know what the thoughts were from the City Council, if they wanted to support that. You can talk to staff. I just wanted to bring it early, because if we're, if the Council's inclined to do this, we need to get the word out. People are already wanting to sign up as vendors, and we just need to do our best to get the word out. So I don't know what your thoughts are, if you have concerns, or just open it up for discussion.
Cooler is better, but I have to push Councilman Hyatt's car. It wasn't your car.
Can I ask a question about, so we've talked about maybe putting more of the...
Can you turn the mic on?
Oh, sorry. We talked about maybe putting more of the rides out of the roads, so that maybe there was more room for more vendors, is that a possibility?
About the only place that would be 300 South, that I'm aware of, and that would inhibit a lot of the traffic going, you know, from point A to point B, it would be more of a traffic problem than, it would cure any other.
I don't think we move it to Main Street, because that would block off the parade or anything else, right? Unless we ended the parade at the park.
That'd be a real short parade.
No, go around the block. How many?
I ran that parade a couple times.
How many vendors do we have to that port?
We have about 25 vendors with 75 merchandise.
Do you have 500?
Do you have any trouble filling those, or do you, do you have plenty? You've been asking already.
Yeah. How many do you think we turn away, as far as vendors?
Merchandise vendors, I agree with everybody here, I allow each day, two vendors. Two vendors, I turn, I think three vendors there, similar groups, I don't know, all the same group there. So there's, some are similar applications that, you know, I think there's a hundred people.
And so then, like on other, I wish we could get midway vendors down here. Do we turn things like that away?
Turn, I think.
Like what they have at Midway? Like craps and all those different things? I mean, we have already people that, oh goodness, they got a scam.
Is that your phone?
That was a scam.
Dad was wondering.
Then what was? So, I mean, I would rather see more vendors, like you said, that are different, but I really don't want to turn them away if, you know, if they're, if they're like totally different than other things that we have there.
I accept most of these vendors, I accept most of the vendors. So the ones you're talking about, the Swiss state is on top of the world.
Yes.
Hey, Janine?
I'm just trying to make sure.
I'm just trying to people can hear what we're saying.
I don't have any more questions.
So the bottom line, Janine, is that you feel like you have a very good sampling of what's out there that want to come?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I think we have, I mean, you've all been there before. I think there's a lot of different variety. Is that what the concern is, or the parade, or, I just didn't know I was supposed to come, so I'm not very prepared, so.
So you're looking to move the parade till 9 o'clock, right?
Well, no, it was just after we had our meeting to discuss it after Onion Days, that was brought to the attention that maybe, I think Chief Bishop brought it up, it was just an idea to change it to 9. Carl and I was just trying to hurry and write down pros and cons to that. We have, and there are several cities who still do it at 10 also, we're not the only one. So it's either 9, 10, or in the evening is when the parades are. Our parade is huge, you have a ton of people who come. So for me, for an hour difference, that's, you may have a lot of people who hear about it. I mean, I'm in advertise here in Payson, but I think you have a lot of people who come from, and we just have to look at the pros and cons to that question. My, your parades, your floats would have to set up by 7:00 AM. They're used to setting up at 8:00 AM. So then my public would need to come and be set up by 8, 8:30 at the latest.
You're set the week before.
I think that's going to be on all the applications if we do do that. Would be getting done at 11 instead of 12. I, I mean, is, I'm just seeing pros and cons of making this push. I don't mind either way.
What's your opinion? You want it at 9, or you want it at 10? Your opinion?
Mine, I would keep it the same, but, I mean, other people are really interested in leaving it tonight, so I guess it's just...
What feedback do you guys have?
I think it gets hot by noon that weekend, that's my push, to push it tonight, that would be the only issue. But since I have the mic, there, I have other concerns about the parade.
Yeah.
I mean, as a kid, it used to turn and go up 100 north the highway, and, and they straightened it out, I never did hear the real logic to why it was straightened out. But the thing I disliked about it is it really bisects our town right in half. There's no way around that, because it goes right up to the freeway and then runs clear up to the top end of Main Street. So personally, I would love to see the parade out dogleg there at the end of the traffic light.
The only problem with dogleg, the reason I'm staying is I can speak to that, it was always coming back on itself, and you really had a real hard time to disperse the parade. It just, it was just an impossible task.
When we ended, yeah, it's always been a straight line since I've been here, but I, yeah, that was the big thing, was at the end.
And I kind of, to me, that makes more logical sense, when you're running youth groups and stuff like that, you get down to the end, and all of a sudden, you're trying to ferry entire groups back up, and the back arterials get blocked so bad, because there isn't a way back across Payson. We park on the west side of Main Street, and they dump them out on the east side of Main Street, and you can't get back through between the two.
You can't get back between, but you go around to one end to the other, that's...
Oh, I mean, through, go clear out through Benjamin, I mean...
No, you turn, you turn there at 9600, and go, you can go out that way. On the, on the, on the west side of the freeway, you go to 9600, and then you can come, come along the side there.
And that's on the maps that we give them, so there's...
I don't know, that's, that's my, yeah, that's where my concern is, where that's where my push is, bring them back in, keep them close.
Curiosity, do you have anybody in the community talking about that? Because I've never, I mean, there's always the traffic complaints, I mean, toward Utah, whatever it is, there's always complaints about their roads being shut off, but, but the way, just general, I don't know that that's been a...
I don't think there's been a huge complaint. I mean, Kemp has it set up so that you can get around on the east side, and you can get around on the west side. The only problem, you can't cross, cross it between there. The one place that would remain open, and it's because the fire department is too, you could get across there at 200 South, no, 100.
100 South.
100 South.
And a main concern last year was just bringing us all together, it just blocked up Highway 198 to the standstill, and I think we fixed that this last year. There was no waiting time at all, people were coming in. I broke up the parking into two areas, so there was really no congestion there this year, this last year.
For the parade participants who want to enter the parade.
Yes, for the parade, just, yeah, I'm waving up and dropping off. I thought that was fairly smooth.
I don't know, this would be a huge thing, but a lot of times at 10 o'clock, it's easier for people to get up and get moving and get to the parade at a little bit later date than having to get up and go so early.
Yeah.
That'd be the only thing I would say.
About 9:30. Is that way, or 3:00 harder than?
Okay.
Because I, I'm kind of like the mayor here, I like, I don't necessarily want to be up bright and early.
On a vacation day.
On a vacation day, but I also don't like, you know, as a parent and as a participant in, in parades, as a high school student, as a councilperson, like, they're hot, and this is a viewer of the parade, you know. We've always said, in the group that I'm with, we'd much rather be done earlier.
Dave, you had some other thoughts, too, right, in the meeting, if others were at 9, or part of the discussion?
I didn't know Janine wanted to keep it at 10.
No, I...
But I don't know, I don't know what other cities go at 10. I know San Antonio's already in that.
I did not come prepared, I could have known, I could tell you everything.
The one thing, when you come to like city traditions, like, when you go out of a city that's been around for a long time, like, if you start at 10:15, then that's a problem. If you start at, you know, like, traditions are just highly held, whether they're, it's a good reason behind them or not.
I don't mind changing it to 9. I mean, that's just, I would really, really have to market it, make sure.
One thing Spanish foreplay, when they change something, they kept it the same event, at the end of the parade for the year before, they said, next year, we're going to do this. I mean, you could do that, and I don't care if you want to leave, it's not, it's not that big of a deal.
So one thing I look at is, is some of those started at 9, probably have their parades in July and August, which is a lot hotter than September.
Yeah, September will...
And it cools off. I've never had too much problem with heat, and I've walked the parade every year, I've never had too much problem with heat, so. If it was me, I'd probably try to leave at the same time, because people are used to it, it's tradition, and it's not the hottest time of year. If it's July or August, I'd probably look at it a little differently.
So I will start getting my Onion Days committee together in March, so we can discuss it, of course, I, anyway, but I, I, either way, so it doesn't matter.
I think that if it's something that's going to happen, we need to run it at 10 this year, and put a float at the end and advertise it. So put your committee together and bring it back to us, and let us decide before the actual parade, and we'll decide at that point in time. Is everybody agreed with that?
I think that's a good way to handle it. I think people are more resilient than we think they are, but I'm also okay with that. We tend to think that people aren't very resilient, and I think they are. But I'm okay with that, too.
I think we have a better chance of people understanding that that's the case, because a lot of times, people don't read the notices we send out. So, okay, do I need to do a motion, just to keep it at 10, or what do we need to do? Okay. Adjourned?
I do have an issue, come up, we can go to a quick closed session, it won't take about five minutes, on some real property.
So we need a motion to adjourn from...
To go into a closed session.
I adjourn and go to a closed session.